Okay, we're all excited and ready to get going for the February the 19th edition of the Canyon City Council meeting. Thank you all for coming. It's not snowing outside, is it? Is that why you're in here? No, it's not. So, I'd like to call it to order. Would you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Good evening, everyone. Councilmember Dennehy.
Here.
Councilmember Maloney.
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Here.
Councilmember Stein. We know she's here. Councilmember Tracy.
Here.
Councilmember Worthington.
Here.
Mayor Protem Hamrick.
Here.
Mayor Troutman.
Here. Okay, is Stacy Swiger here? Would you come forward for the invocation, please?
Father God, thank you so much for this group of people who dedicate so much to this city. I ask that you touch each heart and open every mind here today for what they're going to hear. I ask that there will be peace and unity spread throughout this meeting, and we just thank you again for each person who's going to present as well tonight, that you would help them to have clarity and focus along with their vision. We thank you in your holy precious name, Lord. Amen.
Your pleasure, allegiance. Our pleasure, allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we have this section for citizens' requests to speak to council, and I have a few, and you know that we have a timer, and it's three minutes, and that timer is behind you there. I will remind you of that. So, let's start with, the first one I have is Rita Martinez and Sharon Tuck. Would you come forward to the podium, please?
Good evening, council. We are here representing Loaves and Fishes Ministries, and we have an invitation for each of you. We are having a homelessness awareness walk in March 23rd, right? On a Saturday from 10 till noon, and the main premise behind the walk is awareness, letting people know where homelessness stands in our community, the community groups, not just Loaves and Fishes, who have joined together to help alleviate this issue, not just for the community, but for the people who happen to be in these situations. So, we're hoping that each of you will come and join us that morning and bring your friends and your family. Do you have anything else to share?
You hit it on the nose.
All right. Well, I will give each of you.
Could you, would you mind just giving it to the clerk?
Yep.
Because I know she's, she's just wanting to go on a long walk anyway. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
We hope it's successful. What date is that, again?
March 23rd.
March 23rd. Thank you. Okay. Next in line, we have Chris Jenkins, and you're here to talk about New Method Laundry, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Mr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and everyone else on the council. I am a member of your Historic Preservation Commission, and recently, we were made aware of the fact that the city had acquired the New Method Laundry building, and that they have already put out bids to get some costs of demolishing the building. And what kind of instigated my vision, or my visit with you today, is that we were brought, it was brought to my awareness in this past week, that there may be something that we would like to take a look at behind that front facade that currently has a layer of stucco on it. We were looking at some of the historic pictures of it, and it has a very beautiful cut stone that is behind that stucco facade. Originally, I, like most people, just drove past that building and thought that was an ice ore, and that it was probably well past its time to go. What I would like to see done, and the commission is going to address this, we moved our meeting next week to Thursday to discuss this item, is to at least remove that stucco facade. It wasn't applied directly to the stone. It was actually two-by-fours that were attached to the stone, and then a layer of Celotex, which is kind of a fibrous board that was used on almost every house forever until OSB started to be used, and it looks like it could be removed fairly easily, and we would just like to see what's behind it. It doesn't mean that we're advocating one way or the other, and we haven't had a chance to have a formal meeting on it. We've just discussed it, and would like to see if there's an option or two that we can look at to possibly remove that stucco facade and see if it's worth something to preserve. It's just outside of what we considered the, and I can't remember the exact term, Historic District. It was probably not included because of that stucco facade when that survey was done many years ago. Another example was the Fremont County National Bank. Once that 1970s facade went on, everybody forgot what the old bank looked like. So, I'm not saying that we want to save it unless there's something to save. If anyone has any questions, I'll be glad to let you know what our thoughts are.
Any questions, council? Amy?
Thank you, Mayor Troutman. Just to clarify, Mr. Jenkins, when you say "save it," you just mean the facade, is that correct?
That's correct. I don't think, your engineers and your staff reviewed the building, I think, thoroughly, and its condition is not something that's historically worthy of saving, and perhaps the front stone facade is not. But I think if we can somehow work this into the contract, we did discuss it with the city, and that contract is due on, I believe, next Thursday. So, we moved our meeting to Thursday evening afternoon, so that we can at least see that if the bids came in too high, we have plenty of time to discuss it. If they come in low, perhaps we could do an amendment and allow for at least the removal of portion of that stucco facade or all of it, and see what's behind there.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is John Zimmerman, and he wants to talk about our Item 10A, which is the, on your agenda, that has to do with the Highway 50 project, which isn't in Canyon City, it's in the county, but he wants to talk about it. So, John?
Hello, council. How is everyone this evening?
Good.
I wanted to thank you all for taking the letter off of the consent agenda the last meeting. It did get us a meeting with CDOT. Imagine that, within four hours, they're on the phone with me, saying they wanted to have a meeting to discuss what the problem was. But like I said last time, the problem was, we had been in negotiation with seven months to get a plan, is what was happening on Eight Mile. But they did come down, Andy Stecklin was a very nice young man, the engineer, Judge, Mr. Preston was there, and 11 other people, and he did fill us in on some of the details, but the details that I heard, I'm not really liking. They basically want to put a divider from Skyline Drive to Eight Mile, not quite to the top, with no brakes in it. They're going to add one and a half lanes to the north side lanes, or the northbound lanes on the side, and put a 16-foot barrier in the middle. So, our questions were, what about fire trucks? Can they get to the residents? Because they're going to have to go to the top of Eight Mile and come back down if you turn into the driveways. We had a lot of questions for him. He told us that the plan changes quite quickly. That's why he hadn't contacted me in the last seven months, that it changed. At first, they were going to straighten Eight Mile out, which I'm all for safety, I get that, but are they actually going to make it safer, or are they just going to push the accidents to the end of these barriers? Because we will have to go make U-turns on those to get back to go the other direction. So, we addressed these questions, and he's supposed to get back in touch, and we're going to have some more dialogue with him. But my question would be for the city is, why would you sign an endorsement without details? I would like more details, in paper, and that's just why I came here to say to you, all right?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. John? Lady McFadden, again, 10A.
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 Thank you, council, staff, and Mr. Mayor. My name's Buffy McFadden, live at Eight Mile. We did have the project engineer come down and address quite a few of us from Eight Mile. Like, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for attending, that was very helpful. I thought you were very open to listening to what was happening, even though it's outside of the city limits. It appears, I learned at the meeting, there were some people who attended the meeting who had quite a few more details about the plan than the residents, but at this point, up until last week, the transparency on this project, for those of us living in the area, was about opaque. We still have concerns. There's still several other addresses that are impacted, and one of those areas would be the neighborhood, which I'm now referring to the area with the Hogback Substation right off of US 50. We are concerned about fire protection. We have been speaking with the City of Canyon City Fire Protection District, which does indeed go all the way west to Highway 9, in ensuring that homes do have access for fire protection. The engineer was very thoughtful about that. Those issues were not raised previously. I do understand there is an upcoming meeting. My bigger concern, since the county hasn't done a comprehensive plan, I believe, since 2015, is will this project, as it stands today, actually fit the needs upcoming at Eight Mile and areas on the way to Eight Mile? Yes, it is in the county, but obviously, you as the stewards of our beautiful Royal Gorge have, I feel, an interest in the outcome of this project. That's why I believe that Councilwoman Andrea Stein's participation, along with Leo Kelly's participation on the transportation planning regions, incredibly important. I never thought ever again in my life I was going to have to pay attention to the tip and the stip and the TPR, but I'm going to, and as a matter of fact, our next transportation planning region meeting, I believe, is in April, on the 6th or the 8th, but there seems to be a leadership void to the people, and I hope city council can help with that, whether you're in the county or the city.
Okay. Thank you, Buffy. And Nick? Okay. We have another one, person that would like to talk on the US 50, I believe it is? It's Jennifer Keegan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
I am a resident of, Jennifer Keegan, I am a resident of County Road 69. I found about this, found out about this project at about 3:00 this afternoon, I was totally unaware of it. I guess my concerns, along with the previous speakers, would be, you know, when we first saw the letter this afternoon, it said it was going to go to mile marker 375, which is Skyline Drive. Apparently, it has been reduced back to where it cuts to mile marker 173 or 373.43, whatever it is, which is just west of County Road 69. So, are we planning the AC/DC entrance in there, so we'll have a turn lane? Or are we going to come off a barrier, a barrier, barricade, a median, where we have to turn left coming down the hill with no, but no safety? We have no safety as it is. So, I just want to confirm that we're going to have that turn lane coming off of there.
Okay. Anything in both cases, in all your cases of doing this, you really need to talk to your county commissioners.
But it came up as the city agenda, so I haven't heard anything from the county.
Oh, well, we have, we have to say, I have a letter that I didn't sign.
Okay.
I looked at it the first time, I wouldn't sign it.
Okay.
I'm looking at it again. I too didn't get information. It was a red line on a map.
Okay.
And I do have concerns. I know that area about entrances and things of that nature. That was covered at that meeting, but it was indefinite.
Okay. So, I spoke with CDOT probably three years ago, and addressed the concerns on Eight Mile at the time. I suggested that they turn that passing lane coming down in the section into a non-passing lane. It was low cost, they went ahead and did that, they painted the line, and it is no longer a crossing zone there. I also suggested that they reduce the speed limit coming off of Eight Mile. Do what you want, people speed anyway, but if they know that it's a dangerous intersection, or a dangerous curve, when you come around from 371, when you come around to the, I guess to the north there, and then back around, that turn when you're coming around to the right is not banked correctly. It is not a 65 mile an hour turn. People get sideways in there. They get going too fast, they come across that center lane, and that's where your head-ons happen, because they're out of their lane, because the road is not curved, it's not banked properly. So, before we go putting in medians and tearing stuff up, and I think there's other options out there to reduce the danger, and I would just like to say that I hope they take some other options into consideration. They've taken some, it has reduced accidents, but, you know, putting a barrier up, like they said, for fire and emergency and just whatever, I just, I think we need to look into it a little bit more.
Emily?
Thanks. I really appreciate all the comments, and I've heard some things by phone too, but I want to just be sure that we're, we're dealing with 10A when it comes up on the agenda, right? Not right now?
Right, right.
Okay. I just want to be clear, for those of you that might need to stay around, maybe it won't be too long, so, okay, thank you.
I'll get right to it, so. All right, thank you. Michelle Miller, regarding rentals? Rental? Commercial rental?
Hi, thank you for hearing me out. I am a business owner-operator on the 300 block, a fitness club. I have decided to close down now that Planet Fitness has come into town. I have been in the community for six and a half years. We celebrated our five-year anniversary now in September. We survived COVID. As of now, we've decided to rent out the building. I own the building on the 300 block. I did get a, a young couple that are out of Colorado Springs, a veterinarian, that signed a five-year lease. After three years, they, we've agreed to talk about purchasing at that point. They went to see what they needed with the city, and according to the city, there's an ordinance from First Street to Ninth Street with no animals on Main Street. So, my question is, you know, we do know there's a dog grooming on the 700 block, and across the street, there's a pet store. My building is an 1888 Old Livery, back in the day, they used to bring horses in and horseshoe them, so I know that Canyon City is trying to preserve downtown Main Street. It would go back to, they would like to do a nonprofit with, it's a 6,000 square foot space, they would like to do in the back, work with, with high school and middle kids with PTSD, with issues on tragedy and things through animals, and in the front, it would be a retail space, and then there in the middle area, they would do specialized surgery and things with, with the animals. So, my question to you again, you know, is what's, what is, what's, what is that all about, may I ask? Or what is, if I can request for a special permit to allow them to come in? That's kind of where I'm at.
Would Ryan, our attorney, be able, or should we?
I believe the restriction is, veterinary clinics are not allowed in the central business districts. I don't have the code up right in front of me, but I believe that would be the issue. So, it's full veterinary, is what they're looking to do?
No, no, sir. So, it's retail. It would be animal retail up front, and then in the back would be piggyback with the bridge, with working with the youth, but they are more specialized with post-traumatic stress children, or youth, is my understanding.
I apologize. I thought I heard you say veterinary, and I thought, I heard you say surgery also.
So, he specializes in specialty surgeries? That is not their, their main, their main reason of coming in?
Yeah. I think we would have to set up a meeting and have some, some more discussions about, about that.
Okay. And who would that be to speak to?
I would recommend starting with Rick Harmon, our Economic Development Manager.
Okay, and we need to set up an appointment for that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, council, mayor.
Okay. Is that it? Got awful quiet, didn't it? All right. Any council, city council announcements that you'd like to have this time? Emily?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Tomorrow's the regular monthly meeting of the Community Advisory Group for the Lincoln Park Cotter Superfund Site. We meet at 3:00, both by Zoom and also in person, in a classroom at the PCC Fremont Campus. Among other, among other things on the agenda, there's going to be an update in regard to a planned human health risk assessment that's part of the federal superfund process, and then there's also going to be updates from the state in regard to their overseeing of the radioactive materials licenses, and specifically, we hope that they will address, there's been several leaks recently out in the last six months or so from the pump-back system on site, and so we hope that they provide a little bit more detail about those leaks and what needs to happen in the way of inspections of that line. So, the public is always welcome to attend these, and again, 3:00 tomorrow afternoon.
Thank you, Emily. Amy?
Thank you, Mayor Troutman. I have the pleasure of serving as the city council representative to the Library and Museum Board, and one thing that I love to share after the January board meeting is some of the stats that our city library and city museum had last year, and I think last year is particularly impressive. So, for the museum, they actually, for the first time, have reached pre-COVID levels in terms of their number of contacts, so 6,573 total contacts at the museum. That included 2,807 folks actually coming to the museum, and 2,638 people participating in some of their programs and tours and things like that, which is pretty cool. And then for the library, 116,662 items were checked out. There were over 53,000 visits to the library, which is simply amazing. 3,891,382 database hits. They've done a fabulous collaboration and partnership with PCC in particular, ensuring that everybody who's in our community knows that they can use those library database systems. They also had 10 adult outreach programs with 1,192 folks coming to those, and 80 teen programs, 26 children's programs, and between the teens and the children, over 10,000 folks participated in those programs. So, I know we don't often spend a lot of time at our city council meetings talking about the library and museum, but I think that that's in part just because they are absolutely incredible, they do so much for our community, and I'm just really proud to serve as your representative to that board. Thanks.
Thank you, Amy. John?
Just a reminder that we do have a Vision Committee meeting here Wednesday in these chambers, starting at 5:00 PM, and it's going to be a joint meeting with city council and the Planning Commission, and we're going to be talking about the development process and ensuring performance. And so, if you have any interest in how the city handles development codes, I'd suggest you come and listen.
Thank you, John. Emily?
Thanks. Amy's stats about library and museum reminded me, there's several things related to our museum and history center that I wanted to mention. This coming Saturday, the 24th, at 10:00 AM, the museum periodically does coffee and conversation on different topics, very informal events, coffee, and I understand donuts. This one is going to be for folks who have a connection, either maybe they used to work at Cotter, the uranium mill, or perhaps they live in the Lincoln, or lived in the Lincoln Park area, and so it's just an informal conversation about experiences people have had, perhaps related to those two things. There is a display currently at the museum showing the history of the Cotter site, and then later around, near the end of March, I'll verify the date on that, there's also going to be a panel discussion at the museum in regard to the Cotter site. Thanks.
Thank you, Emily. Anyone else? I did attend one at the museum, and unbeknownst to me, it was about professional and football players from Fremont County, and I did know the one, and both of them had played for the Lions. Leo cheered for the Lions. But is it, we'll, we'll convert you somehow. Denver's going to get a team, by the way. So, just kidding. But I thought it was really interesting, and I thought I knew a lot about that, but I know that there were two or four that were from Fremont County, that are professional football players. So, they are very interesting, it is very informal, it was enjoyable, it's in an area that's, in the, in the room, as you go in, to the left, and it'd be a great thing to go to, and really, if they have donuts, what the heck can you lose, you know? Sorry, I shouldn't have said that, but, okay. Anything else? All right. Here's the exciting part of our evening. I'd like to invite Human Resource Director, I think I said it correctly, Butch, to come forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, council members. Once again, I have the privilege of coming before you to help you recognize some of our employees who are reaching milestones in their careers with the city. The first individual unfortunately wasn't able to be here this evening, but I still wanted to get it on record and recognize him publicly if we are service. That's Jay Reynolds. Jay originally joined the City of Canyon City as a parks maintenance worker on February 5th, 2019. On June 29th, 2020, Jay transferred to the street departments as a street maintenance worker where he's been since. Leo, can I get you to come up and say a few things about Jay?
And the Lions? Oh, I'm sorry. And the Lions? We can say a lot of things about that. Leo Evans, Public Works Director. Yeah, Jay's been a great employee. Five years is a huge milestone. In his department, he's actually one of the newer guys around, so he's got a long time left to be here, and he should be one of our faces that sticks around for a long time. I know he would have liked to have been here. They're currently working 10-hour shifts in streets. They do 4:10s in the winter, so he's worked 6 till 4:30, and wasn't going to be able to stick around till 6:30 for this, so he sends his regards. Exemplary employee, works primarily with our asphalt crew, so you see him out paving asphalt, that's usually where you'll find Jay.
Okay, thank you, Leo.
Thank you, sir. And then the next person I have the honor of recognizing is our own Judge, Judge Larry Allen. Judge Allen became municipal court judge on January 1st, 2004, after he was appointed to that position by the Canyon City Council. He has served in that role since his original appointment, so he's been in there for 20 years.
Thank you. Brian? Judge Allen.
I'll let the city administrator do the comments.
You know, the judge is one of council's three appointed employees, but certainly appreciate the judge and everything he does. If you have a chance to be with the judge outside of the courtroom, it's amazing how many people come up and, you know, they, they know the judge, they, they talk to him, he knows their story. He is fully ingrained in our community, he's a great asset.
We kind of grew up together.
Kind of, sort of.
Kind of, sort of.
Yeah. It's been a real honor and a pleasure to serve the city and its citizens for this long, and I can't tell council how much I appreciate you and all the former councils that have given me the opportunity to do that, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge.
I'm quite honestly humbled.
Thank you, Judge.
We would like to hear a few Preston Troutman stories.
No, no, no.
And has, has become our custom, if I could get council to step down and draw the dice, we'll get a picture?
I have some Preston stories, but I'm sworn to say.
Your time's up.
Thank you. Okay, very good. Thank you all. I would like to ask the Chief, John Schick, to come forward and do a presentation for us.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of Council. Tonight, we're going to recognize a city employee, a peer of ours, that is really an unsung hero in the community and certainly to the police department. He has been an absolute staple for us in terms of working with the homeless, to help identify issues, trends, needs, and help us work through them. And of course, you know, this problem or this issue is ebb and flow. And certainly, we can use all the help that we can get at any one time. And he's been instrumental in that. If I could introduce Jesse Young, come up? I'm going to have Commander Leonard come forward and read his nomination. We were going to recognize Jesse at our most recent formal annual awards program. And he was sick, and he wasn't able to make it. This is why we've decided to come to Council tonight and present him with this. Commander Leonard?
To piggyback on Chief, appreciate you guys having us and are certainly honored to do this. So I nominated Jesse for the Citizen of the Year for CCPD's end-of-year awards ceremony. And if I may, I'll just read the citation. This was to our awards committee, "All I would like to recommend, Parks Supervisor Jesse Young for Citizen of the Year. In 2022, Jesse was heavily involved in the establishment of a process to identify and clean up homeless camps around Canyon City. That involvement in the establishment of the process turned into direct hands-on involvement by Jesse in 2023 in not only identifying homeless camps for the police department to deal with, as the vast majority of them, if not all of them, are on private property and therefore criminal in nature, but to also clean them up. Jesse has gone above and beyond in his scope as a professional at the Parks Department to identify homeless camps, contact any homeless in the area, post signs advising the date and time property would be removed, and then collect the property and transport it to the police department where it was held. Jesse has always been a professional in these endeavors, both with members of the public and with members of the police department, and he has always made himself available to assist us. This was a significant undertaking for the Parks Department and was spearheaded by Jesse. Not only did Jesse help out with homeless camp process, Jesse makes daily rounds through the parks, near the museum, and near the library to ensure everybody's safety. The citation for this award notes, "Citizen of the Year awarded to a citizen of the city of Canyon City whose actions, achievements, or service performs in such a manner that reflects positively on the image and professionalism of CCPD in its mission of serving the community during the past 12 months." A candidate must be nominated by a member of the department. Examples include an extreme act of bravery while assisting CCPD or one of its employees, rendering help to an officer or other employee, or providing significant assistance in solving a case, or other service to law enforcement. Safe to say Jesse's actions and service have most certainly reflected positively on the image and professionalism of the Canyon City Police Department, and is a direct reflection of our mission to provide service excellence. We are incredibly proud to have the opportunity to work with the Parks Department as a whole, but to have worked with Jesse so closely over the last several years, and just super grateful for everything you do for us. So thanks so much.
Thank you. I wanted to, should we go down, friend? Let's go down. Let's get Jesse in that.
I will let you folks know that Jesse's the hardest working man in the show business. He's an incredible employee. He's there waiting for anybody else in the morning, and he leaves way after everybody else in the evening. He's just an exemplary employee.
And actually, if I may, before the Chief and Commander Leonard leave, as you know, occasionally I'll have people come into my office and want to discuss things that are going on with the city. I don't know why they want to do that. But one of the impressive things, I had a gentleman come in and wanted to explain to me how well our officers handle a homeless situation. He said, and I quote, "The patience they had, I'd have tased them right then and there." Now, I know, but he said, "I was so impressed with your officers." It just gets to me because you guys are great.
We're incredibly proud of our staff. They are resilient, they are patient, and they police with their heart. They want to help people.
That is, but it is so nice that when you come in and to hear that, and how I appreciate hearing. I just want to tell you that.
I agree. Yes, sir.
It's great.
It is great.
Thank them all.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Be safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Catherine, did you want to add something? Oh, it says City, it said, oh, now it says.
I don't know. I can walk along.
City Attorney? Do you actually have a button, too? Really?
I never use it. That's why.
I don't get a button. Okay, all right, got it. And thank you, gentlemen, and everybody that came. So that was great. Okay. I'd have the City Attorney review the agenda and the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of Council. Item 8A is to approve the minutes for the regular City Council meeting on February 5, the general government meeting on February 7, and the special meeting January 30, which were Planning Commission interviews, special meeting on January 31, which was the Multimodal Open House and Water Committee, special meeting on February 2, which was FCA events, and February 5, which was an executive session. 8B authorizes the city administrator to sign an agreement of service with Civic Plus for codification. 8C authorizes the city administrator to sign a professional services agreement for pedestrian bridge inspections. 8D authorizes bicycle disposition. 8E awards bid 2524 HB 980 hydraulic breaker with nail point to Bobcat of the Rockies and an amount not to exceed $12,201.56. 8F awards bid 2824 for 2024 carryall 300 utility vehicle to Colorado Golf and Turf in an amount not to exceed $11,761.35. 8G awards bid 3024 to 2024 Tahoe PPV patrol vehicles to Daniel Long Chevrolet in an amount not to exceed $105,054. 8H awards bid 3124 CSO cab and chassis for animal control to Daniel Long Chevy in an amount not to exceed $49,228. 8I awards bid 3424 water distribution dump truck to McCandless Truck Center in an amount not to exceed $153,081.95. 8J is to receive and file monthly budget summary for December. And 8K is to receive and file cash disbursements and P-card disbursements.
Okay, are there any additions or corrections? Amy?
Thank you. I just have a request. I think 8J right now is just the monthly summary for December, but it did spur quite a few questions amongst, I know amongst several of us about some of the expenditure rates. So I would just ask, when we have the 2023 finalized numbers, that we maybe set some time aside on one of the City Council agendas to talk through maybe why some of those burn rates weren't as high as we had anticipated and what we're doing to mitigate those challenges this year.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, I read that in your email, so appreciate that. Any other additions or corrections? Then at this time, I would entertain a motion and a second.
Mayor Troutman, I move that we approve the consent agenda and agenda as written.
Second.
Second. Are there any discussions on that motion? Hearing none. Would you call roll, please?
Councilmember Smisher?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hammer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Maloney?
Aye.
Councilmember Stein?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy?
Aye.
Councilmember Worthington?
Aye.
Okay, thank you all. I would like then to invite the city administrator to present the staff report.
Thank you again. You have your written report or the written report in the packets. Do you want to highlight that myself and the Public Works Director met with CDOT representative regarding the East Access Control Plan? CDOT has decided to move on from the East Access Control Plan in Canyon City. They are reallocating those funds to a different community for a similar type of project. They didn't feel like they had enough support to move forward and justify spending those funds on this project at this time. And, you know, certainly left the door open for future opportunities. But at this time, given their timeline with the grant funds, they felt more comfortable moving in a different direction.
Did I do, I did that wrong, didn't I? Should I ask you for a...? No, that's right. So then the next item in discussion is A, the CDOT letter of support, US Highway 50, Canyon City. And Emily, did you, go ahead.
I just have a question or comment in regard to the city administrator's report. And I'm not sure if Ryan had anything more he wanted to add, but I just think since the East Access Control Plan is one of these long-term things that had come up some years ago and then came up again more recently, and certainly there, I think, is a lot of views on that in the community and concerns in the community and on Council about what that might look like. So I would just encourage all of us as Council and staff to take a look at what we do have in place, as I understand it, the US Highway 50 corridor plan, which has been in place, what, about nine years, something like that. And so I just would encourage us all to kind of take a close look at that, see if it's still, and I don't have a feeling one way or the other yet, but see if that still represents what direction the city wants to go. You know, we certainly have some longer-term issues, I think, in terms of that East Access question, and whether Fremont Drive will ever go away or not. And if it does go away someday in the future, then I assume the traffic lights associated with Fremont Drive also go away. So one way or another, I think, as a city, we should look at, what do we want the traffic patterns and the roads to look like in that area, regardless of what CDOT is suggesting from one year to the next. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Thanks, Emily. Do you think that's something that we refer or put on for the general government, a general government session? Would you like to do that? I concur. We talked about their plan and our plan and plan, plan. And it might be a good idea to take a look at that again.
Yeah, makes sense to me.
Yeah, well, let's do that. All right?
Yeah, we can get that on a future, future agenda.
Okay, so then did you want to discuss the CDOT letter and Highway 50?
Yeah, you have a letter of supports for CDOT in the packet. This was tabled from the previous meeting. CDOT is seeking federal grant funds through the RACE program for funding for their project that they've identified on Eight Mile Hill on Highway 50. And we've put it on the agenda for Council's consideration. I don't know that staff has feelings one way or the other regarding this. This is, this is a request for support, and we'll leave it to Council for discussion.
Have you all had an opportunity to read that letter or see it? Okay, any discussion on that? Well, that was rousing. That's exciting.
Mr. Mayor, I have a com, just, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Yeah, if this project is so important to CDOT, why on earth did they make those people wait that long, you know, to come and talk to them? That's kind of concerning to me. You know, I'm no expert at this, but I don't understand why it's taken seven months for CDOT to address residents' issues. Thank you.
Emily?
Thanks. And certainly, we've heard from folks and appreciate folks who came and spoke again to this issue tonight, as we heard from folks two weeks ago. And I guess, I don't have an objection to sending some kind of a letter of support, as they've requested. But it's hard to know, it almost seems like the wording should be a little different because we, as far as I know, have not seen anything in writing that says what that plan is going to be. We know it's related to safety, and certainly, that makes total sense. It's, you know, gradually over the years, CDOT and of course highway departments all around the country are trying to put barriers up so that you don't have head-on crashes, even on highways that have a big median. You know, they're putting barriers in. It makes total sense to do something on that stretch of Highway 50 between town and Eight Mile or some segment of that. But I guess I'm a little, I just want to be sure, if we send a letter of support, we're a little clear about what we're supporting. Maybe just, you know, say something in the letter about, we'd love to see the plans as soon as possible, that our support is based on the goal of achieving better safety on that, something that's a little more concrete, rather than just saying, "Hey, CDOT, we support you on anything you want to do here." So that's my thoughts for now.
Thank you, Emily. John? John Hammer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, I did receive a call from a citizen who voiced similar concerns to what we heard tonight. And I, in general, I would agree about open-ended endorsements of CDOT projects. But as I understand our letter, what we're doing is we're expressing our support for CDOT as they pursue federal grant funding. And maybe that would be the wording that could be changed, that we support CDOT receiving grant funding for this project that is safety-related. We make that case pretty strong. But I think that, I think that at some point, we could have the cart in front of the horse here. Because for CDOT to proceed with the project, they have to have funding. And they can't tell us what the project is going to look like at the end because they haven't gone through the process yet. But they are a public agency. They do go through a public process to determine the parameters of the project. And that includes hearing from all those concerned about a particular outcome, including from our fire chief. I know that he will be very interested and will probably have a lot to say about the project. So, but, but I think that this letter, if we just changed a couple words, that we support them receiving grant dollars, is, because that is what, I think that's what we kind of all agree on, is that they, that they do receive the dollars, go through the public process, and if they can satisfy the public, they've got a good project, and they're off and running. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Amy?
I would agree with that as well. I also believe Public Works Director Evans sat in on some of those meetings. And I also know that Ms. McFadden noted that individuals within the city may have more information. So if we do have more information about whether or not there will be turns allowed at different points, or whether or not, you know, land would be taken for that expansion to the north, I think that would be helpful to share.
I can say that I did participate in a, I forget their term for it, a design review meeting last week. They did provide me a set of plans for the project. I want to say it's about 400 plan sheets long, so I did not review it in detail. But if there's certainly concerns about specific locations that people have, I'd be happy to pull those out and look at those. to pull those out and look at those. I just am not comfortable speaking about what those exactly include today.
Okay, thank you. That's really helpful. And I don't think it's, I don't think that that's an appropriate use of our public works director's time to review 400 sets of plans. But certainly think that if we were to change the wording of the letter to make it clear that our support was contingent upon public support and public engagement, but that we do support grant dollars going towards this important project, given the safety issues there, I'm fully in support of that.
Was this letter that I was given, Ryan, did we write that or did they write that?
I think council was... Individual councils, they used the distribution list to send a draft letter to city council. What we did is we took that draft letter and inserted some of our own language, primarily that second-to-last paragraph about additional things that we would like to see in the project.
Yeah, I would like to see that. I haven't signed it. I was hesitant from the beginning without going to any of these meetings. I was literally given this with a red line on it. That makes me uncomfortable because I know people up there, and I would be concerned that even for emergency or for just access, someone that wishing, that lives in the middle there, wishing to go west, would have to almost drive down to mile marker 275, wherever that's at, and then make a U-turn and head back to Salida. But at the meeting that I was at, they did, he did describe that they had openings, certainly for wildlife, but safety, you mean fires and ambulances and things like that would be sort of cumbersome. So maybe when we meet tomorrow, are we still going to meet tomorrow? We could? Yeah? Well, maybe we can discuss before I sign it, or sign it at all, the insertion of some verbiage like that.
And I think what we're looking for tonight is whether or not council's, you know, wants to sign it at all. So I think...
Okay. What is the direction I... Would someone like to make a motion? Is that... Go ahead.
Yeah, and I just want to state that the only reason that that is an issue right now is because we're not, we won't have another opportunity to bring it back to council for a vote because I believe their deadline is before our next council meeting.
Yeah, before the fourth. Would... Jerry?
Is there a way to determine what kind of letter we would agree upon in support of this tonight or by tomorrow or the next day? Is that possible?
We could certainly give that out. It's, to me, it is the appropriate access to individuals that are directly affected by Highway 50 and with emergency services as well as inconvenience. If that and public hearing so that everyone, it sounds like some people weren't even notified, which they should have been, and public notification and discussions therefore.
I agree with that completely. But this sounds like this letter of support is so that they can apply for some funds to start.
Yes. What this, this does is put them in the hopper along with other entities that would sign it agreeing that they should be granted the funds for a safety program on Eight Mile Hill from mile marker 275 to 272. And I don't know about you, but I have no idea where that's at. I have, I can guess. So, so the basis of the letter is support to the Department of Transportation to support this project for Highway 50 for safety purposes. And how it's enacted thereon is the question. How are you going to do this? Is it going to be a solid wall? Appears from what they gave me, a solid wall all the way from mile marker 275 to mile marker 272, which is totally wrong, I think, and inappropriate. I personally believe that if you're going to do that, you probably should have done something a little better than that. It seems a little slipshod, in my opinion. Oh, I hope they're not listening. Anyway, I was very hesitant when I first saw the letter. Then I saw what they gave me to make my decision on, and I wasn't willing to do that. So here it is at council.
And may I speak up?
Yes, Tim. Go ahead.
You know, I also look at this as, you know, they don't even have anything from the county yet because this is outside the city jurisdiction, but, you know, and listening to the people, right now, I would say, you know, let's wait on this again. And, you know, if the funding comes through or doesn't come through at this point in time, it'll come up again. But I think there's been a lack of communication and, and I'll be honest, I would be real curious, because this is county, of what our county commissioners are also feeling on this, on this. That's how I feel right now.
Thanks, Tim. Jerry? Did Grace spoken?
Yeah, I already, yeah. You need to clear my...
What am I doing wrong here? Amy?
I was going to attempt a motion because I think that there may be enough consensus that we approve the idea of you meeting with Ryan to flesh out additions to the letter that speak to what Mayor Protim Hammerick, Councilmember Maloney have recommended and yourself have recommended with regard to appropriate access, appropriate public hearings, appropriate public engagement, and ensuring that those individuals who are most effective, including emergency services, have the appropriate access. I understand that the letter is only for grant funding, but it is like approving in concept the project by name, which we don't have enough information about. So that would be my motion. That we approve Mayor Troutman's meeting with City Administrator Stevens tomorrow to amend the letter to include these concerns and that he then sign the letter if such language can be found.
City Administrator Stevens, you think you have a good handle on the concerns expressed?
Kathy? I'm sorry.
Thank you. I've been trying to talk here. I believe, you know, I will second what Amy just said. What I was going to say is that this really is just trying to get the ball running, rolling to where we can get some federal dollars to help CDOT work on the safety issues of that section of highway. I do agree that this is just the first step, and we do need to do a heck of a lot more coordination and teamwork with CDOT to, as this project goes on. But I really think the letter in support would be to say, "Yeah, we want you to get the money," you know, and basically, that's what we're doing at this point. And then we make sure that we keep the thumb on the issue to make sure that as it, if it goes forward with the dollars, that we make sure it's designed to include all of the issues of our public to make sure that they are getting what is needed from both the fire departments, safety issues, and usage. So, thank you.
My box quit. I don't know who's next. Who would like?
I'll just add that I agree completely because I think it's an important safety issue on that hill, and we can't just let it go. You know, and it won't, it won't just come back. It might come back in 10 years and we'll have the same discussion. So as long as it's acceptable to property owners, like we, I won't repeat everything we just said, but maybe we can draft the letter to say that and then be in support of it. That would be my vote.
So you're, what I understand the motion is to take this letter because, and do some amending to include the safety and precautionary and access? No?
And public involvement.
Public involvement? Kathy, no?
I think it's basically all we're doing is we are in support of obtaining federal dollars.
Yeah.
For CDOT.
Yeah.
For a safety issue. And then, after that is obtained, then you start working on CDOT to see how it's actually designed to meet the criteria. But this is going to the feds. They don't, you know, they're not going to be going into all of the design of it. We need to be able to work with CDOT after the money has been obtained.
So, Mr. Mayor?
John?
So, the, I, I understand that and I agree with the first part of what you said, except that I think it's really important, based on the concerns that we've heard, that if we do have a letter of support, that we lay out the other conditions that we think that CDOT needs to fulfill to be able to go forward. And those being access, that's emergency-type access, public hearings and process, that it's acceptable, acceptable to those that are affected and that they seek support from the county. I can agree with that. You know, it's that way, then the letter is actually not only going just to the Mr. Buttigieg, I can have to say it anyway, but to the traffic person, but also to CDOT so they're aware of our interest to begin with. And I'm fine with that. I think that's great.
Then we're looking for a second.
Didn't you, Kathy seconded it?
Kathy, okay. Any discussions on that motion? None? Fine. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Worthington.
Aye.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Maloney.
Aye.
Councilmember Stein.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hammerick.
Aye.
Okay, thank you all. So the next city minister, the Red Canyon Park Trails Committee recommendation, could I have the administrator expand on that?
I will pass it over to our public works director and parks director to talk about the Red Canyon Trails process.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you, mayor and council. We're here today to present the final findings from the Red Canyon Park Trails Committee. The committee was formed as a result of Resolution 6 in 2023, so they've been around for a little less than a year now. In that time, the committee has met multiple times, has done a lot of outreach and public engagement with the community. I have not been able to be personally a part of every one, but every meeting that I've been to has been very well attended and been generally very positive and supportive of this project overall. I would say there's certainly a few issues and challenges that have been run into, but in general, there was a lot of momentum and support for this project. What you have before you from the committee is the recommendation for, I believe it's approximately a three-and-a-half-mile loop.
Yes.
That goes around Red Canyon Park. In addition to that three-and-a-half miles, there are a number of short spurs that come off of that main trail that take you up to, you know, the best lookout points and the best geologic formations in the park to really highlight a lot of the things that you would not ordinarily see in the park and a lot of people probably have never had the chance to see before now. With this recommendation, you know, if this recommendation is approved, it would be the parks department's intention to begin work immediately, to start building these trails. Work would be done with our in-house trail builder, Steve Thomas, as well as probably the assistance of other parks staff.
Yes.
I think we kind of envision it taking maybe a month or two months to complete. Is that sound about right?
Probably a little bit longer than that. With the three-and-a-half miles, it's really rough terrain and there's going to be a lot of hand-building, so that'll slow things down a little bit as opposed to using the machine.
Another thing I guess I would highlight is this will be, the loop at least, will be an equestrian-friendly loop. So a lot of work was done with the equestrian community at this park in particular. You'll notice, I think you can kind of just vaguely see it there on the right side, there's a brown line that actually leads out of Red Canyon Park that will go over to the Red Canyon Stables, and they've agreed to allow access through their property to get into Red Canyon Park via a designated trail and gate, as well as public parking, which is especially important for equestrian users as it's very convenient for them, and the more equestrian trailers we can keep out of Hefina Park and Red Canyon Park, I think, the better for everybody. So I think that was a nice solution we were able to find there. And with that, I'll stop talking.
And everybody was, you know, the like family, and Lori, the owner of the stables there, were very cooperative and very friendly. It was just a great experience. But I'd like to thank all the members of the committee. Councilmember Schmisher was our chairwoman. She did a great job. And as well as Councilmember Worthington. We had Tim Payne, Sonia Baker, Martin Welsh, Steve Thomas, and Becky Shiola was on the committee. We met several times individually, and we had several public meetings. The last one was out at Red Canyon, and they got a chance to actually see what we were doing out there. And for those of you that might not know, I'm a lifelong Canyon City resident, been working for the parks for 28 years in that Red Canyon Park. Just driving through it on the roads with no established trails, you don't get to see a fraction of what is in there. It, that park, in my opinion, rivals Garden of the Gods in some of the views that we'll be able to get from this trail. So like Leo said, it's a three-and-a-half-mile loop, and then there's several spurs that will be going off of that to viewpoints. It's just an out and back, back to the, to the main trail. And it's, it's going to be an amazing trail. So we're very excited and hopefully we'll get your blessing and we'll get started.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, I did, I was contacted by a citizen about this also. Their concern was it was a plan without an associated cost. Could you, and you mentioned that we would have our in-house trail builder working on this. Could you, could you speak to the costs to the city for this, for this effort?
As far as the actual dollars spent, I couldn't at this point, but Steve Thomas is our trail builder and he's employed for six months out of the year. So all of the, you know, the cost for the trail building will be in-house. We do have some money in the budget for extra help that we could hire, but I don't see that, you know, I think the parks department employees will be assisting on this when we can. We're getting ready to get into our busy season, so, you know, we'll, we'll be up there as much as we can, but it's, it's pretty much in-house, the cost.
So you have, you have budgeted funds.
Yes.
That can be used.
Yes.
And those are, those are for incidentals like construction materials and things like that.
And even contractors, we, the money that we are raising into the city coffers from the East Ridge Campground, those are the funds that go back in to build and to maintain the trail system that we have now. So we've got a mechanism in place there to, I've always said, "Don't build one foot of trail if you can't maintain it." And so with council approving that a couple of years ago, we've got plenty of money in that, in that fund to, you know, hire additional contractors if needed. But mostly, the cost is going to be, it's, we already have it, it's there, in-house.
Would, is this, if council gives the go-ahead for this, would this be in lieu of some other project that we would have used those funds for?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else? Amy?
Thank you, Mayor Troutman. I just wanted to thank Rex and Steve in particular for their leadership and their inclusiveness throughout the process. It was really important to us for this particular project to make sure that we were considering all user groups and really following all of the requirements laid out by council in the resolution to explore the history, to take into account public input, and to make sure that we were resolving issues as opposed to just letting them linger. And I think one of those in particular is that equestrian access through Red Canyon Stables and then the like ranches. So I just wanted to thank them for their, their leadership and their support and their willingness to consider everybody's issues and needs as they went through with that. I did also just want to flag for council that really it's two things that we're looking for this evening. One is the approval to begin construction on the proposed trails within Red Canyon Park, and the second is to authorize the city administrator to sign those two license agreements, one with Red Canyon Stables and one with like ranches, because the trail that would be for secondary equestrian access would start at Red Canyon Stables with the public parking and go through like ranches. We're still, we have agreement on the main points of that, including that it would be free, that all of the entities would maintain their own sections of the trail, that they would install the gate, those sorts of things. But we're still ensuring that all parties are in agreement on the finer details of the language. So it would be authorizing the city administrator to sign those agreements once the attorneys and all parties have signed off. Thanks.
Thank you, Amy. Would someone like to give us a motion? Emily, please.
Thanks. Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the construction of the proposed trails within Red Canyon Park and authorize... and authorize the city administrator to sign the agreements with the adjacent property owners once finalized and approved by our city attorneys.
Second?
Second. Any discussion on that motion? If none, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Tracy.
Aye.
Councilmember Worthington.
Aye.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Maloney.
Aye.
Councilman, Councilwoman Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilwoman Stein.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammer.
Aye.
So they don't have to break the vote or anything like that, right? I never get to vote. Just kidding. All right. Let's go on to C, which is the Technical Services Agreement with Black Hills Colorado Electric LLC. I would invite the, is it Leo or the city admin, Leo?
We'll hand it over to Leo again.
There you go. Leo, the lion fan.
All right. We'll give an abbreviated version of a presentation and quick discussion that we had at the January Energy Committee meeting. Look at that, right off the bat. So this project is a budgeted project. We have $725,000 budgeted in our current 2024 budget for that, and I can't see it because the text of talk is over it. I believe it's about $600,000 of grant dollars through two C.DOT grants and about $125,000,[831.32][831.32]$120,000 worth of local match on those two grants. We had been working with Black Hills on this project. It envisions adding streetlights on the entirety of US 50, essentially from Rainbow Drive, 15th Street area, east to McKenzie. Black Hills estimate for that project was about $2.1 million, so we were well short of being able to do the entirety of the project. We've looked at a couple of different options related to this project, a couple of different direct-wired options from Black Hills and a couple of different solar-powered options, and we'll talk about those really quickly today. Option one is a direct-wired, so these would be lights that are installed, owned, and maintained by Black Hills. They would be able to install 23 lights for our budgeted $725,000. Those 23 lights are shown as the blue boxes in the bottom, and that's also included as the last page of the agreement. So those are kind of scattered throughout the entire corridor, essentially at the critical locations, where there's intersections, where there's driveways, where there's long gaps in the existing street lighting. The pros in the city's perspective of a direct-wired system is that the city's not responsible to maintain them long-term. We would pay a monthly tariff to Black Hills. I believe it was $8.22. That may have been the 2023 number, and I'll have to check and see if they published a new for 2024. That's established by the Public Utilities Commission. This would allow us to have a simplified process through C.DOT for delivery, meaning we don't have to do the traditional local agency project where we, you know, step through every one of the environmental hoops and historical hoops and develop a full set of plans that are engineered. We would simply contract with Black Hills. Black Hills is a utility provider. They receive a utility, I believe it's called a special use permit from C.DOT, to do the installation, and it's, it's good to go. It would be a really quick lead-in time, probably six months from, you know, adoption of an agreement to getting some lights installed out there. You know, on the negative side, we don't have a lot of input. Black Hills rather has, you know, their handful of lights and poles that they'll use, and that's what we're stuck with. We don't get to pick things that we think are pretty or, you know, look nice. We get what Black Hills wants to provide. And it's not solar-powered if that, you know, is a priority for us. We did look at an option for solar-powered, utility-owned lights. This one was rather attractive, but, you know, the biggest point for the group and for us is this is the longest timeframe. Currently, Black Hills does not have a tariff with the Public Utilities Commission that would allow them to do this. They would first have to petition the PUC to create a tariff. They would then have to go through an RFP process just to select their vendors. Couple other things that really came to light from solar, and even in the best options we could find with solar, it takes about two times as many solar-powered lights to do the same thing as the direct-powered lights for this type of application. So while the solar lights are cheaper to install upfront, they're only about half as expensive as a direct-wired light, but it takes twice as many of them, so the net cost comes out about the same to light a corridor. Crash testing was another one that came up. We haven't found any solar options that have been crash-tested to the standards that C.DOT would allow on this stretch of roadway, so whatever we picked would have to be crash-tested. Maybe one exists that we just didn't find, but it was definitely a hurdle we would have to get through. The other option we did look at was a solar-powered, city-owned system. It would cut out the PUC and the Black Hills RFP process, but it would put this in the city's court for long-term maintenance and responsibility. We would have a lot more input into the look and design, provided it could still meet crash-testing requirements, but it was something that we considered. In kind of comparing all these options for the corridor, I mentioned option one, the direct-wired lights requires about 70 light installations to do that entire corridor. Option two, we'd still have to figure that out based on what exact products Black Hills would pick, but it would likely be at least twice that number, in the 130 to 140 range. And then option three, you can see some of the manufacturers we found quoted that it would take up to 250 to 300 light poles to do that corridor with lighting. Our current funding of $725,000 allows us 23 direct-wired lights or allows us roughly 40 to 50 solar light locations. And I can talk a little bit about how we got that cost after this slide. Looking at the maintenance costs of these, option one is a very set, fixed, structured amount. It is a cost per month that does include the operation, maintenance, repair, replacement. There's no meters. We don't pay an electric bill on direct-wired lights. If one gets hit by a car, Black Hills comes and replaces it. If a bulb burns out, Black Hills comes and fixes it. Option two, we wouldn't know until a tariff is established. Just in general terms, if you need twice as many lights, the tariff would have to essentially be half what the direct-wired tariff is to, to make sense in a long-term maintenance standpoint to be comparable. Option three, if we install and own a solar system, there is no set monthly cost to us. It should be free to operate by and large. They do require battery replacement. Most of them were in a 10- to 12-year range that costs about $700 per battery, and most of them also recommended the luminaire, the light element, be replaced at the same time. So just factoring that in, the 10-year maintenance cost of a city-owned system is more than the 10-year maintenance cost of a Black Hills-owned system, when that does not even factor in, you know, any of these being damaged by vehicles or the eventuality that the city has to replace them at the end of their useful life. Speaking of the other considerations, we did, we do have a need for 12 streetlights on the US 50 pedestrian crossing project that's ongoing. We had a quote from Black Hills to do direct-wired installations at those crossings for, you know, you can see $310,000. We received a quote from Fonroche Solar, which was one of the best solar manufacturers we were able to find for about $167,000. The difference in that installation is that we're, we're lighting a single point rather than lighting a corridor, so we don't need twice as many solar lights to light a single point as we would to do a corridor. So we do, we did make the switch on that project to choose to install solar lights in that installation, and that is where we kind of got our pricing from, to see what a cost per light for solar is. I think it ran about $13,000 if you do the math on that versus about $28,000 apiece for the Black Hills direct-wired, direct-wired lights. Again, we did discuss this at the Energy Committee meeting on January 22nd. The Energy Committee did have a preference for option one. They did request and have a preference for consideration of option two or other alternatives in the later phases. I think my consensus or my feeling walking away from the meeting was that they wanted to see something move forward sooner than later with this project, and that option one allows us to make the quickest installation and make an impact. So with that, we did get with Black Hills and updated the Technical Services Agreement that was brought to the council a couple times last year, maybe just once for actual consideration. We do have a total cost right now at $675,000 for design and construction. The, a couple of things to note, the quote does not include any overbuilding of the system for future expansion, so they're not adding extra wires or heavier wires or doing more work to set up the addition of more direct-wired lights in the future. And the agreement is really limited to just these 23 installations. If you recall, the previous agreements all were broken down into phases and were in agreement for the entire project, and we were approving Phase One. This agreement is a standalone agreement for these 23 lights. Anything we do in the future would need a new agreement to come back. And I think that is what I have to share on streetlights on US 50.
Thank you, Leo. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, Leo, I think you summarized the, the sense and the points presented to the Energy Committee, and I appreciate that. I think, I thought you did a good job there. And I would like to thank the Energy Committee itself for getting together and meeting on this issue and using their expertise to help make recommendations to the city. The Energy Committee members are Carol Dunn, Doug Cohen, Kirk Soother, Emily Tracy, and Kathy Worthington, who also are city council members. And with that, anything that you'd like to add?
Emily?
Thanks. I, I think I have three questions. I, and one, the first one is about dollar amounts. I'd made a little scribble note. At one point, you mentioned a $725,000 cost, but then at the end there, you said 675, so I just wanted to be sure I'm hearing the right numbers for where we are today. And then I have a couple other questions.
Yep. The, the 725 is the full budget. 675,000 is Black Hills' estimate for those 23 lights. I think the, the action item, I believe we did recommend the full, or the, recommend spending up to the full amount for, as a contingency essentially, for the additional $47,000, whatever that would be.
And then my second question was, I, I think you had it on one slide, but I may have missed if you addressed it, whether these lights will be dark-skylights or do we know?
Yes, I believe, they are dark-sky compliant. I don't think I had it on this presentation, but we did, it was on one of the ones when we discussed it previously.
Okay, thanks. And then my third question is, does council, we don't have these slides yet, right? But we'd like them if we don't have them.
Oh, certainly, I can get them to you. Yeah, I just finished them today, so.
Thanks.
Definitely don't have them.
Just a point of clarification, there, there was a slide that said dark-sky compliant. That was an example of one of the solar lights.
But, but not the, yeah.
Not the Black Hills lights.
That, that's correct. But what we will be installing will be dark-sky compliant.
Thank you.
Amy?
Would you mind just quickly going back to slide four? I just want to make sure I understood the difference between the, or maybe it was slide two or three, actually, I'm sorry. That one, three. So the blue would be the new additions and the red are the existing?
The, the red was the first iteration that Black Hills presented of a scattered design that included overbuilding the system to be able to add in the other 55 lights in the future.
Okay.
We told them that that was not something we wanted to consider right now, so the blue allows them to add more lights with less overbuilding.
Okay. And I guess my only, only question or comment on the placement and completely agree on the overbuilding and glad that we pushed back and have come up with a better solution on the span from McKenzie in having them all on the north, is that?
The, the lights are on both sides of the road, just the, the, you can kind of see the blue box goes from the north to the south side. There'll be one light on each side of the road at that location.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much for clarifying.
Thank you. Kathy?
One thing I'd like to ask is if we can kind of encourage Black Hills to start the process of getting something through the PUC, because if we have the ability for some small subdivisions and so forth that will be providing street lighting, some of those solar lights, they're at a lower height, but that's what you put in a residential area. And I think that would be something for us to try and influence to put in for future subdivisions and things that way. So if there's any influence you guys have with that, that would be really nice.
Certainly. We can, I know they were excited about the opportunity and seemed like they wanted to take lead on that themselves, but just because we're not going forward on this round, we can still follow up and make sure that's happening and keep track of the progress.
Good. Thank you, Kathy. The only question I had, can, how, can that be added too easily, but we could, could you mix and match? Possibly we have the blues now and maybe there'll be some breakthrough in solar technology in five years, we could add solar lights.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, we, we'll be able to mix and match if that option becomes available through Black Hills.
And it's in C.DOT right of way?
Yes.
Have you talked to them about that? I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
One bridge at a time.
Okay.
The, I, I believe the answer to that is Black Hills has an agreement, as I understood it from, that they have an agreement with C.DOT about putting in streetlights.
And we did get permission from C.DOT for the 12 solar lights that are being installed in C.DOT right of way out here in town, so.
I was, it was a bad attempt at putting in humor. Okay? So any other questions or discussion? Can I ask for a motion then? Kathy, go ahead.
Yes, I move that we approve the Technical Services Agreement with Black Hills and authorize the mayor to sign. Further authorize work to commence on Phase One as outlined in the agreement in the amount not to exceed $725,000.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Emily, thank you. Any discussion on that?
Just a point, this is, this, technically, this is not Phase One. This is the project. Is that, is that correct? With that clarification, thank you.
Thank you. All right then, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Worthington.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy.
Aye.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Maloney.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Stein.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammer.
Aye.
Well, thank you. That does conclude our meeting. Next will be March the 4th, 2024. Thank you all. It was a fun evening, huh? Just agree with me.
Yes, and if anybody would like to see the specific trails for Red Canyon, I'd happy to show you on the map.
That's great. Thank you.